Being that it is six o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Coos Bay City Council to order. With one adjustment. Rock on. I'm sorry, I always wanted to do that. You should never give me a microphone. Is that better? Can you hear us out there? All right. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. I did want to note that Mayor Benetti is not able to attend tonight. And Counselor, Council President De novo is ill, but she is online, as well as Counselor Stevens and Counselor Matthews. So, our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our next item is public comments. And I do wanna note that the public comment period is intended for the public to share ideas and concerns. It is not intended for an interactive discussion with the council. There may be opportunities for public comments during specific agenda items that require a public hearing. Members of the public are requested to confine their remarks to questions or issues under discussion during this time. During any designated comment period, individuals shall not engage in personal attacks, shall not impugn the motives of any speaker, and shall at all times while in session conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. No person shall make personal, impertinent, slanderous, or unauthorized remarks or become boisterous while addressing the council. And we do have a few folks that would like to speak. Scott, if you could approach the microphone, give us your name and where you reside, the city in which you reside.
My name is Scott Fraser. I reside in Coos Bay. I'm coming to the council and the city today to discuss Bay Area Hospital. And I've been there for 25 years as an employee. And I think whatever happens in the future with Bay Area Hospital, it's gonna affect the city. So I think this is a good place to talk about it. So on the 28th of this year, a social media statement was posted. Part of the post read, "The current financial situation isn't the result of mismanagement." But, a CEO and administrative team are responsible for the overall direction and success of the company, or company. In this case, Bay Area Hospital. Responsibilities include strategic leadership, stakeholder management, communicating with the board of directors, managing finances, managing employees, overseeing operations, creating strategies, and representing the company to the public. Years ago, like three or four years ago, the management or the administrative team decided to go with an Epic EMR. It's an electronic medical record system. They haven't really talked about it much in the statements made by the hospital or the press, but I think Epic was a disaster. It cost, I'm sure it cost the hospital millions of dollars. And it also, I think, well, and we partnered with St. Charles Hospital in Bend as a source to fix issues with Epic. But they were ill-equipped to solve a multitude of issues. And it's been going on for years. It's still not corrected. I think it drove a lot of the seasoned nurses away from Bay Area Hospital, which led to temporary vacancies that were filled by costly travelers. And now we're gonna talk about partnering with Quorum. If that doesn't work, they could close the doors. And that's gonna, I think Coos Bay's gonna become a ghost town. So it's, I don't know how the management and the CEO can't take responsibility for what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person who would like to speak is Eric. And I should have noted that you'll have three minutes to speak. At one minute, our timekeeper will let you know you have one minute left.
Okay.
If you could give us your name and the city in which you reside.
Eric Clough, and I reside here in Coos Bay. So I'm not gonna be able to stick around for the rest of the meeting. So I wanted to make a comment on the agenda item for the Bicycle Fact-Finding Subcommittee. And then I wanted to make a comment just generally on the state of cycling infrastructure for the city. So I applied for that position on that subcommittee soon after I was told that it was opened up on through the city's website, and never got any kind of confirmation that the application had even been received. So I waited a couple of weeks. I finally called the city office and, you know, I got, oh yes, indeed, we did receive your application. I was like, oh, okay, well, great. I mean, it would be nice to have some kind of confirmation that it was received. And then since then, I never heard anything else from anybody ever from the city regarding this. So I was interested and happy to see my name on the proposed list of committee members, I guess, for tonight. And as I understand it, perhaps there's, you've had not enough interest from others. I don't really know, but I just wanna say that I'm pretty sure that we can get some other interest if we start putting the word out there. So I would, I would be, I'm optimistic that if we want more people on that subcommittee, we'll, we'll get some more voices input there. And I would like to add a few words on the state of cycling infrastructure here at the city. You know, we first, me, myself, and my partners at Front Street Community Bike Works first came to the city with a proposal for a one-way route to Mingus Park from Front Street to get things connected. And that was in July of 2022. And since then, there's been a lot of water under the bridge, so to speak, but there's not been any actions tangibly on the ground, anywhere as far as I know, within the city of Coos Bay. So, as an example, it's very frustrating to know that there has been nothing tangibly done. We've had planning. We've made some progress there. Planning is important. We can't do anything without plans, but we gotta get some, something. You've gotta provide the cyclists with something to give us some faith that the city and the city staff are willing to do anything like this. And as an example, at one point, when I was on the Parks Commission, I asked one of the city staff a question about some signage. Can we just get a sign up that says, "Watch for emerging bikes?" And, you know, the answer I got was, "Oh, motorists have sign fatigue. There's too many signs out there already." So that's an example of the culture, I think, that you've got here with city staff that really, we gotta work on that because that's not acceptable. And I just wanna encourage you to get something done. And I'm happy to help and participate with that. So I look forward to the subcommittee starting its work and helping with the Parks Commission. So thank you.
Thank you. And Dean Lundey. Please give us your name and the city in which you reside.
Hi, guys. Dean Lundey, Coos Bay resident. I can't back up Eric Clough enough on this frustration of nothing being done on pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. I don't know if the park department has even bought any paint to do anything, how they got kicked over to the bike lane stuff. The, that one corridor from, from up, a block from here, up central, up Ocean is a main corridor for people, especially to get out of here in a, in an earthquake. Where our school has been studying, we're about 170 years behind the, this due for a super, like a nine earthquake. This street here and, and connecting to Ocean would be gummed up. Anybody who gets in a car is dead. You gotta run or get on a bike and run up the hill. And that's kind of what I feel is up the hill. There's a choke point. It's, it's all on the plan that we've paid for for years. It's, there's a choke point there at 12th Street. It's easy to figure out. There's that, even Greg with the planning department, that stupid setup from 11th or 12th Street. It's just, it's illegal, the center section. It's so easy. There are three legs to the stool of safety, road safety is designed according to all the books that we've read. And we'd be, would be glad to, to help figure out how to do these things and put money and time into it, too, you know, to advise bicycle safety. You know, we've been studying this. The three legs to the, to the, to the safety is design, education, and enforcement. And we've got, everybody's educated on how dangerous it is out here. There's no signage. There's no shero decals. I don't even think the park department's bought any decals yet, or if they have the ability to even torch them down. I don't know. But anyway, design, education, and enforcement. And the ODOT is, they're already set up.
A calendar, and how would the council like to proceed?
I'd make a motion to accept the agenda. Consent calendar, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the consent calendar. I do wanna note that that is, contains in a resolution appropriating library funds that have been received through a grant, another grant opportunity. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is a presentation by our Coos Bay Police Chief, Chris Chapinar.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll do it. I'd like to face you guys. Pull the PowerPoint up. It's not a Mark Anderson PowerPoint. I can promise you that. It's only 13 slides.
So what you're saying is we'll be out of here tonight?
Yeah, we'll be out of here tonight. Yeah. First off, thank you for allowing me to have a little time. I provided you guys a presentation similar to the one I'm gonna provide tonight last year. And I thought it would be nice to provide you with it again this year. And so hopefully, maybe we could, can we dim the lights a little bit? Maybe you guys could, hopefully you see it. And I'm hoping that you, you got a copy of it, too, to follow along. Okay, so tonight, my presentation is obviously gonna cover the Coos Bay Police Department and North Coos 911. I'm gonna try to use this little clicker. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but, and, okay. So first off, we have a mission statement that is for the Coos Bay Police Department and our 911 Center. We share the same mission statement, and that's to efficiently provide quality law enforcement services to our community by promoting a safe environment through a police-citizen partnership with emphasis on mutual trust, integrity, fairness, and professionalism. Like all organizations, you have a mission statement. Sometimes the mission statement kinda gets lost in the weeds, but we really do value this statement. We reflect on it each year as we set our goals for the upcoming year. We reflect how we want to kinda set up our patrol efforts and our dispatch efforts around our mission statement. And we really do have an emphasis on police-citizen partnership. We wholeheartedly support that. Also, during our annual, we have an annual meeting with them to be, to be strong. But what we mean by that is self-reliant is we wanna make sure that our folks are trained to a level that anything that is presented to them, that they are able to handle that, whether it's an investigation, whether it's a call that comes through the dispatch center, whatever that may be, but we wanna handle it with a level of confidence and competence. And we wanna provide that professionalism to the community that we're serving. And so, and we continuously look for ways to rise to the next level. What that means to us is we, we hear the feedback from maybe the DA's office, or we hear the feedback from citizens that let us know where we can do better and how we can do better, and what areas that we're doing well and what areas we're not. So we're constantly looking for that way, the ways to rise to the next level. We have four core values that are extremely important to us. In fact, they're right outside of my office door, on a wall, a full-size wall. Honor, integrity, excellence, and teamwork. And what we did is we, we took a look at those and what those words mean to us, and then we applied some definitions to them. And those are definitions that we came up with as a, as a team, not just out of the dictionary. And so those, those words, those core values mean a lot to us. And we also kinda arrange all of our patrol and dispatch efforts around those. So, kinda getting a little bit down into the meat and potatoes of this presentation. So we, this is the most updated organizational chart that we have, and it's really hard to see. And Christine did absolute outstanding job in trying to blow it up as much as she could, but this is kinda where we're at. But this is just an overall view of what our department looks like. We're gonna get down a little bit further into the weeds on the next few slides and explain this. But as I'm sure you, I know you guys are aware, we recently, last year in September, we went through an organizational change when we brought in all the, we started dispatching for all the county agencies and fire, so, and became the only one dispatch center in the county. And so with that, we also had to make some internal changes. And so organizational chart changed in appearance and became a little, a little bigger. And so the next slide, I'm gonna break that down, what that actually looks like in terms of numbers, full-time employees and volunteers and stuff. But the next slide, just keep in mind, it is representing fully staffed. And I will tell you right now, we are not fully staffed in patrol or dispatch. But this is the, in the perfect world. So basically, what that organizational chart means is on the law enforcement side, on the sworn side, there's 24 sworn police officers. That includes the chief of police, two captains. We have four patrol sergeants. We have 12 patrol officers, three detectives, a community resource officer, a school resource officer, and we have a half-time evidence technician. And then in our records, we have three records. We have one record supervisor and two records technicians. And then we have, generally, we have a police reserve program. Right now, currently, we have one reserve, and we have two applications that we are reviewing. And that's a program that just kinda, we, we build up, and then we generally hire out of it and deplete the program. And then we are looking for new applicants. And so that's a great training grounds for us as well, and recruitment. We have two disabled parking enforcement volunteers at this point, and a police chaplain. So that's on the, kinda the sworn side of the house. And then on the certified side of the house, which is the dispatch, we have found what these numbers mean. And we're also gonna relate some of these numbers to previous years and give you guys some idea of some crime stats and just kinda where we're at. So reflecting on 2024, we, this is just Coos Bay. These stats only represent the city of Coos Bay and Coos Bay Police Department. The dispatch center, that will encompass all of the calls that come in, but, but the calls for service on the police side, we responded to 35,773 calls for service last year. We pulled 3,784 or 54 case numbers. We, we had a total of 1,281 arrests. Are you able to just expand that just a little bit? Why, I should've had my glasses. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna be like, nice. I can, I can handle it, then. We had 168 criminal citations. We did 4,146 traffic stops. We made 104 DUI IRS. And we, we wrote out, I think it's 2,073 violation citations, 237 criminal trespasses, 138 criminal mischief. You're awesome. I didn't know I was gonna have an eye exam tonight. We had 428 thefts, 82 burglaries, 62 stolen vehicles, 108 assaults. And assaults in Oregon is one through four, and harassment, and that encompasses all those. 10 domestic assaults, 39 sex crimes. We conducted 200, 2,738 patrol checks. We wrote 69 search warrants. We had 109 agency assists. Three major crimes team call-outs, which generally are homicides. We had one crash team call-out, seven emergency response team deployments, which is our tactical team, our SWAT team. We had 672 camping violations. And our dispatch handled 108,163 calls that came through North Coos 911. But keep in mind, as of September 1st of 2024, we began providing services for the entire county. So those numbers are inflated by about 20,000 from the previous year. What that is, how things are there, but. We processed about 4,500 pieces of evidence. So a lot of evidence comes through our evidence technician. And we had 23 patrol canine deployments, 2,345 hours of training, which seems like a lot, but not when you start breaking it down to how many people have to attend training to keep their certifications up. And, and we obviously expanded our Coos 911. We merged essentially nine law enforcement agencies and 15 fire agencies through our, through our dispatch center. And we really implemented our PIO, which is Public Information Officer Program. And we really started utilizing them, calling them out for, on the major crimes calls and significant investigations and becoming a part of that, that team. We promoted our first ever, at least to my knowledge, first-ever communications administrator, Tessa Cupp. And she is now manager over the 911 Center. We finished the dispatch remodel early January of 2024. And with that remodel, we expanded our consoles to six. And I will be reporting next year that we'll, we'll have added another one. So we'll have seven full 911 consoles in our, in our dispatch center. We survived a tsunami incident. And we also, first time in Coos Bay's history, we changed our badge for, for the 150-year anniversary. And so we have a 150-year badge that we'll wear for the full year of, of the 150th year. So that's kind of a few things that went on. So what does all that mean? Basically, so the very first, the very first slide, it says total calls. I gotta say, I messed that up. That's 35,377, like I mentioned earlier. That's less than a half a percent change from the previous year. But what I wanna point out is all these stats here, the number below it, the percentage below it, is relevant to the previous year, and relevant to the previous year, and it just goes so on like that. So I, like I said, I messed up that first number. I didn't realize that till I was reviewing the slide. That should be 35,377, which is, like I said, less than a half a percent difference from the 2023, where we handled 35,946. Case numbers, we took, like I said, 3,084 case numbers, less than what we did the previous year, about 10% less. And I'll, I'll have some reasons for that, and I'll explain that towards the end of the slide. Total arrests, we, from last year, we had 1,333. This year, we had 1,206. Down a little bit on that. DA referrals, we, we referred 75 cases over, and 162 the previous year. And you can see, and the pattern you can also take a look at is from 21 to 24, you can take a look at those numbers. And you can see, the 21 was kind of the, we were basically COVID. And that had a lot of impact on just our overall crime stats. 22, and then 23, if you remember, the jail was almost completely closed. And so a lot of the numbers in 23 were really, really high based off of just the repeat offenders and us constantly responding to the, you know, the same calls. So criminal citations, we had 168, which is a reduction from the previous year of 233. Traffic stops, so we, we increased our traffic stops. I can't get this thing to move here. I don't know if you guys can see it, but our traffic stops went from 3,159 to 4,146, which was an increase, which also contributes to the increase in our DUI IRS. In 24, we responded to 188 traffic crashes, which was up 5% from the previous year. And like I said, DUI IRS were up 38%. Traffic violations, we increased over last year, 1.5%. And criminal trespass, we increased 2.2% with 237. But from 22, if you look at that, we declined. So that's, I think that's moving in the right direction. Thefts, we had 428, which is a reduction by about 13% from the previous year. Burglaries are down 43% less than the previous year. Stolen vehicles, the same, although I will say we've had quite a little spree this last couple months in stolen vehicles. So I'm not sure what 25 stats will show. And assaults, we were down 37%. Domestic assaults, we were down about a half a percent. And our sex-related crimes, we were down as well. Patrol checks, it's something that way back in, when I became the chief, it was something that I really wanted to strive to increase. And I think we have done a really good job of increasing those patrol checks. Those are documented patrol checks where they've actually went to various locations, whether they're problem locations or just locations that we check periodically. And we've increased that. I was pretty proud of them last year, but we've even increased it over last year, 6%. We wrote, like I said, 69 search warrants, which is a little bit down from last year, but that's still a lot of search warrants to write for our size of agency. And then an interesting stat that I, I found interesting was our overdose rate. We, we peaked last year at 76, and this year, we had 29 overdoses, which, or in 2024, which I think is, it was a decrease 31.8%. So, you know, there's maybe a lot of contributing factors to that. Agency assists was down a little bit. Our major crimes was about the same, three to four. And our crash team, we reduced in response to the crashes, not that we didn't have fatal crashes and crashes that would result in our crash team deploying. Just Oregon State Police has kind of beefed up that program and has really become a good partner with us in that. And they have taken the lead on the majority of those, those types of crashes. And our CRO, which is our Community Resource Officer, I left that in there because, like I've mentioned to you guys before, that is not a forgotten program. That is a program that we wanna get back up and running as soon as we are adequately staffed to do that. So I left that in there. That's a stat that I wanna continue to report back. But we- That's a stat that I want to continue to report back, but we don't have that position currently up and, and running due to our staffing levels, so it does not have a stat at this point. However, if you look at the one below, the camping violations, our patrol officers have done a great job of picking up that slack and, and dealing with some of the camping violations and some of the issues that we've, we've seen throughout our, our community. We increased those violations from three hundred and ninety-nine in two thousand twenty-three to, to six hundred and seventy-two. And like I mentioned earlier, the Cuse nine-one-one, we increased about eighteen thousand, and that's due to the, bringing on the, the additional agencies. And so that is, it's kind of a real quick and just a overall presentation of where, where we're at, crime stats and in relation to the previous years. And, you know, a lot of them, you probably, you're looking at them, you're saying, okay, well, crime stats look like they definitely have decreased, at least over two thousand twenty-three. If you look back, two thousand twenty-two, they're maybe a little closer in, in percentages, but really, I, I would contribute most of that to a functioning jail. We, we gotta have, as all of you know, but we, we have to have a jail that is functioning, and when we have that, then it seems like our crime stats do reflect accordingly. In two thousand twenty-three, when we weren't able to even take them for booking processes and stuff, it really showed our, our crime stats were, were elevated from that. So. But yeah, so I'm open for any questions, if you guys have them, or answer any, anything you saw, or?
You answered my question. What's, twenty-three was kind of an anomaly related to the jail, including the overdoses and the higher incident.
Yeah. Yeah, and also in overdoses, I would say that, you know, I think maybe people hopefully are becoming aware of the dangers of, of fentanyl use and heroin use, and some of those overdoses, they are, they're just not happening. There are also Narcan is more readily accessible for, for folks, and so we're seeing some, some of that. But also, the, the laws changed around the, the possession of illegal substances as well. So I think all those are contributing factors.
Thank you.
Thank you, because I was going to ask about that, if that, if you felt that that had an impact. You know, looking out to the future, based on what you've been able to compare over the last few years, what are your, what are your thoughts? Are you, are you feeling more confident as far as the work that you do in the community?
Yeah, I, I think we are, I think we're definitely headed in the right direction. I, I think a lot of it does depend on kind of the, the status of, of the jail and where, where that's going to end up. I, I think it's, it's a vital necessity for our criminal justice system. I also think that, you know, it's tough for the, the DA's office to operate short-staffed, but I think they're doing an excellent job of trying to, to, you know, prosecute the cases that they need and pay attention to the cases that, that they need to. But again, it's kind of dependent on that, is, you know, if they can't maintain their staffing levels and, you know, we could potentially see our stat, our crime stats go up again. But in terms of, I, I think we're, we're really kind of, we've got good ordinances in place, we've got officers that are out there doing what they can to try to work within, you know, the, the laws and the city ordinances to address the, the issues, and I, and I think we're on the right track.
Do you have any questions? Anyone online?
No, but just to say thank you. This was very informative. I appreciate the multi-year statistics and the change over time, so thank you for that.
No problem.
Anyone from the council online have any questions, comments?
Great presentation. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, our next item, under action items, is the consideration of approval of a proclamation celebrating Women's History Month. Nicole?
Yes, thank you. I'll give us a start with some background. The first proclamation for Women's History Remembrance was done by President Jimmy Carter in March of nineteen eighty, was acknowledged as a week, noting Women's History, Women, National Women's History Week, and that continued until nineteen eighty-seven, in which it was expanded to acknowledging the month of March. So what we have before you is a proclamation, and I'd like to read that. Whereas throughout history, women have played pivotal roles in shaping societies, advancing progress, and championing justice, equality, and human rights. And whereas the contributions of women historically underrepresented have been instrumental in every facet of, facet of human endeavor, including science, technology, arts, literature, politics, business, and education, and whereas the resilience, determination, and leadership of women have inspired generations to strive for excellence and to change barriers and stereotypes. And whereas Women's History Month offers an opportunity to celebrate the achievements and contributions of women of all backgrounds, cultures, and identities, and to honor their courage, vision, and legacy. And whereas, by recognizing and amplifying women's voices, stories, and experiences, we can promote gender equity, foster inclusive communities, and create a more just and equitable world for all.
Now, therefore, I, Stephanie Kilmer, on behalf of Council President Lucinda de novo of the City of Cuse Bay, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month, and call upon citizens to honor the extraordinary women who have shaped history and to support initiatives that advance gender equality, uplift women and girls, and ensure opportunities for all. And I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we consider approval of proclamation celebrating Women's History Month.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Right, we have a motion and a second, declaring March as Women's History Month. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And our next item is a proclamation designating March two thousand twenty-five as Brain Injury Awareness Month. Nicole, you have this one?
Yes, so it'll start us out again. So March two thousand twenty-five has been recognized as Brain Injury Awareness Month. This is observed each March, each March, which highlights the impact of brain injuries, promotes prevention, and advocates for better care and support. This is led by organizations such as the Brain Injury Association of America. So then, moving into the proclamation, whereas every year, millions of individuals in the United States sustain brain injuries due to various causes, including trauma, stroke, illness, and other medical conditions, and whereas, brain injuries can have lasting effects on cognitive function, physical abilities, emotional well-being, and overall quality of life, impacting individuals, families, and communities. And whereas, increased public awareness, education, and early intervention play a crucial role in preventing brain injuries and improving outcomes for those affected. And whereas, individuals living with brain injuries demonstrate remarkable resilience, strength, and perseverance, and deserve access to comprehensive care, rehabilitation, and support services. And whereas, by fostering understanding and compassion, we can reduce stigma, enhance accessibility, and empower individuals with brain injuries to lead full, lead fulfilling lives.
Now, therefore, I, Stephanie Kilmer, on behalf of Council President of the City of Cuse Bay, Lucinda de novo, do hereby proclaim March two thousand twenty-five as Brain Injury Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to learn more about brain injuries, support individuals and families affected, and promote safety measures that help prevent these life-altering conditions. And I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proclamation designating March two thousand twenty-five as Brain Injury Awareness Month.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second proclaiming March two thousand twenty-five as Brain Injury Awareness Month. Any discussion?
I guess I would just like to say statistically, individuals over seventy-five years and older are the highest category of traumatic brain injuries from falling, and that results in higher incidence of death. Men are also two times more likely than females to get brain injuries, and the highest category of men are young men aged sixteen to twenty-four have the highest incidence. It is something to be aware of, you know, for men, typically, we're just lucky if we can live through that stage, and then at some point, find a smarter woman to get us to grow up and quit doing stupid things. Anyway, it, it's, it is a big deal, and it's a, it's a, it's a large, it's a leading cause of death among those of us over seventy-five years of age.
Appreciate that. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that additional information. And our next item is consideration of appointment to the Cuse Bay Public Library Board. And I want to note that we had three applicants, qualified applicants today, wonderful interviews that we interviewed before the council meeting, and I want to say how much I appreciate everyone that came out, that filed for those positions, that position. There's, there's one that we're filling tonight, and, but there can only be one, so we'll entertain a motion from the council.
I would make a motion that we nominate Karen Forsythe to the library board for this term, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
I'll second.
All right, and before we, was there anything that we needed to add to this? This is filling a?
It is filling a vacant position due to a resignation, so it's just going to fill that term that was in existence. There normally would be some regular, just length of terms. I think they're coming up, I think you have a couple coming up in June again, so, but this was just a resignation.
Okay, I apologize, I should have had you give that background before we went into this.
Yeah, no worries.
The term, so this is filling a position, and normally, we would do that, they're, they're staggered terms, I think they're four-year terms, but this is a, do we know how long this term is?
June thirtieth.
Yeah, June thirtieth, twenty-sixth, so it's just filling that, the rest of the term that's unexplained.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Just to reiterate what you said, three good interviews, three good candidates for, you know, volunteering in, in public service.
All right, then I will call for the question. All those in favor of nominating Karen Forsythe to fill the vacant position on the library board signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? The motion carries. Again, you're all in attendance tonight at this meeting, it was great to meet you all, and there will be opportunities for two positions that will be opening, open for, filing for, and I, do you know, do we have a date for that?
So expiration is June thirtieth, twenty-five, so we'll likely start some advertisements before that.
All right, so be on the lookout for those, we appreciate you coming in. Our other candidate, candidates was Jessica Kohler and Chris Castleman, and congratulations, Karen. All right, our next item is consideration of ratification to the Bike and Pedestrian Fact-Finding Committee. Do you want to give us some background on that, Nicole?
Yes, I'd love to do that, thank you. So the Parks Commission, with the approval of the city council, established a Bike and Pedestrian Fact-Finding Committee. This, the city solicited for these volunteer positions to, for a period of two months, advertising on our website in the Friday update. We received three applicants from members of the community for this committee. However, two of those applicants were already Parks Commission positions, so we have left, I think Eric Clough was one of the, the remaining of the three who was here and spoke earlier this evening. So you're being asked to ratify his participation in that fact-finding committee.
And do we have a little, for the members of the public, a little bit about that fact-finding committee?
Yes, so we worked a little bit with the Parks Commission. You might remember that there was an interest to bring the bicycle and pedestrian path kind of topic to a body who could maybe then provide a recommendation to the council. And review of the Parks Commission makeup, the, the code that relates to that, that's actually an element that is noted within the Parks Commission's duties. So those topics became discussion items before the Parks Commission, and it's just a, a lot of information that still needs to be gathered to understand how best to address that. So working with, city attorney with Nate, we've, we arrived at creating kind of this subgroup that would go out, gather those details, those information points, and bring them back to the Parks Commission. That helps in not creating another meeting body, per se, they're just kind of gathering some data points and, and bringing those into an already established group that meets on a regular basis, makes it easier for everybody to kind of stay on track with what's being brought forward. So that's essentially what we're trying to do, is, is staff that kind of committee that's going to gather those details and bring it forth to the Parks Commission, they can then have good discussions, hopefully bring forth their recommendations in relation to those two elements, bike and pedestrian travel in the, in the city limits.
So that can really streamline the process?
That's what we're hoping, yeah.
Came up earlier today.
I have a motion.
Sure.
Would you like to motion?
Wait.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
Just a clarification, it, they won't be making any recommendations, the Parks Commission is the only part of the group there that is allowed to make an advisory vote or a recommendation to city council, so this is purely fact-finding. We had to do it that way because of the laws around, the meeting laws, as you've mentioned, Nicole, so it's, it's purely just going out and getting information, and then, and then it'll go through the Parks Commission. So yeah, I just wanted to also address Eric's frustrations with the pace at which everything is moving. I will say that it's, it's been a big, it's a big undertaking for a small group of volunteers who meet once a month to, or now twice a month, we've had to bump up to twice a month because we have so much to talk about. It's a lot to understand and take in, and I, and I share frustrations with how things move slowly, but we have to do this transparently, we have to do it in a way that is fair and democratic, and unfortunately, that, that does take more time than it would be if we just went in there and, and blew it out and just did it however we wanted to, but we're hoping that we can do this right the first time, or at least, I, I can't speak for the entirety of Parks Commission or the way that everything works, but for me personally, when we go forward in making a bike plan, I want to make sure that it's done right, and that we get adequate comments, and we've done all our fact-finding before the paint hits the road. That's, that's just my, my little bit there, but I do share frustrations, I want to see things happen as soon as possible, and with your help on the fact-finding committee, I think that we will make much greater strides in, in progress, so that's all I have.
Okay.
I still have a motion. My motion, we ratify Eric Clough to the Bike Path and Pedestrian Fact-Finding Committee.
All right, we have a motion and a second to ratify Eric Clough to the Bike Path, Bike and Pedestrian Fact-Finding Committee. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Eric. And now we are up for the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to give you an update on Gussies. Sorry, reference it as Gussies, but that's the historic name of the building, that's at ten eighty-eight New Mark in the Empire District of Coos Bay. The building itself has been, as we all know, in disrepair and been accessed by, you know, those not authorized to do so, causing some challenges at that site. We know, we had some struggles with the previous owners. The, the current owner was actually a lending organization who's taken that property back. And we, they've been, the new owners are a little bit more responsive. They've been working with our code enforcement officer. They secured the site with some fencing, they've been responsive when the fencing has had some challenges with staying upright or folks getting access. And they were given a timeline to have some progress, and that was actually on Monday. They have made a contractual arrangement with a hazardous materials consultant who will go in and determine if there are some hazardous materials inside, and that will kind of help inform demolition, which is what their intention is. So we do expect in the next couple of weeks to have demolition permit filed and, and see some progress there. So just wanted to let you know that update. There had been some discussion about the city potentially acquiring the property, and we did make an inquiry into that. However, we didn't find a middle ground that was appropriate for what we were willing to put forth. So there's progress being made, and ultimately that's the goal, is, is to do something with that site, get it back into a developed use. I did want to share as well, I've talked a little bit over the last several months about a opportunity that the city had to work with HUD under their Distressed Communities Technical Assistance Program. We reached out to them last fall in relation to kind of having some assistance with creating some financial planning. They actually came forth with a bunch of opportunities for us, one was a review of our permitting processes. We were also going to use them to review city fees. They're helping us with some grant management and resourcing of grants. They also provided some leadership development, really just did an assessment of some areas where we could use a little bit of a lift. As we know right now, there are some challenges across the nation, and we've unfortunately had to, we were notified this week that those, that program wasn't going to be funded. So they are the group who's been great to work with, is kind of working on finding alternative funding outside of HUD. So to be determined, but as of right now, that work is kind of being set aside. We will potentially try to take up some of that on our own, depending on capacity, but just want to give you an update there. Also wanted to give a shout out to the Adopt a Park program, specifically Coco. She's been doing a, a heavy lift for the Mingus Community Building. Some of us may remember that as a scout cabin. She actually presented for, on behalf of the city for having that building added to the Historic Register, and we're getting one step closer there. Also learned recently that there was a grant awarded by the local Rotary Group to help support some of the work that's being done at that building, so just really thankful. She's a volunteer and putting in a ton of time to make a big difference in that building, so.
Did she, did she apply for that grant?
Um, she, it probably was in conjunction with Christina, our grant coordinator, yeah.
That was a pretty sizable grant, ten thousand.
That's what I understand, yes, yeah. It'll play a big role in getting that building back into use for the public, so. I wanted to share too, we have, the city's been having some communications with the port. We have a couple of opportunities in relation to the walking path. That's there by the boardwalk, potentially identified a grant that we might partner with them on to do some stabilization there. That's, the dike is actually the port's property, we just have the asphalt pavement on the top that we've taken responsibility for maintaining. Yes?
Can you define stabilization?
So right now, the water side of the dike is kind of sloughing off. We've done some work in the past, which we wouldn't be able to do now in today's standards. You're not allowed to introduce foreign objects into the water, and historically if you've walked along there, you will see that there are sections of concrete materials, so old sidewalks. We were able to use to stabilize the water side. You unfortunately cannot do that now because there's potentially leaching into the water, so. It's a, takes a little bit different effort. Of course, we want to do those things because that preserves our natural environment, but it does also cost a bit more. So partnering with them on that, pretty excited that they're interested, that has not historically been the case. And also those conversations kind of led to, right now, we're just doing this as some investigative work, so not saying we're, we're walking this path just yet. But there is a business Oregon grant that is available for feasibility of housing on a site that would assess infrastructure needs. And as we know, they have some property in the east side which is residentially zoned. So another opportunity we may partner there to have a feasibility study for the east side property. And that kind of segues into housing just in general. There is a program that we're poking around with that's coming out from the state, it's the Middle Income Revolving Loan Fund. You know, you guys, the council's been a driver in trying to find ways to incentivize housing development. We are not builders of homes, but there are ways in which we can hopefully incentivize that. And this is a program that's new for the state, in fact, it's just kind of peeling out right now. We're waiting for some more guidance. As we learn a little bit more, we might be inclined to bring this forward to you. It, it operates under essentially being able to use some of the property tax revenues for a development like that to help a developer put in some of the infrastructure and some of those costs that would normally be difficult to develop a large-scale housing development. So uncertain yet, but very possible we'll be bringing that forward once we learn more. So that is what I have today.
Quite a bit of information there, any questions for the city manager?
Nicole, thank you for that, yeah, there was a lot of information there. I guess first I wanted to say I'm excited to hear that the port, we're working on opportunities to partner. When you say partner, I just want to be very clear, is that a, a financial commitment that they're willing to potentially make to fix that parcel of land?
So at this point, it would be potentially being a co-applicant on a grant, which would allow us to investigate. We, we need to know some costs associated with development of the east side, you know, putting in the infrastructure over there. That would be similar potentially on the boardwalk path, is partnering on a grant, acknowledging that that is port property in both instances, so.
Okay, great. Okay. And then I also wanted to thank you for the update on HUD, that project, and the fact that we're going to need to pause that. I was in Pacific City last week in Tillamook County and at an Oregon Tourism Commission meeting, and we were given a report of a number of projects that have been put on pause due to funding issues coming from the current administration. And so I'm not trying to make this political, but I think it's important that we know what projects might happen and what projects might not. So I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. And just again, I appreciate the transparency around the Gussies property and the work that you and staff are doing to continue to move that forward. And that's been a project we've been working on for a really long time, so I commend you and the team for continuing to move that along.
Thank you.
Since, since you're, you're speaking at this point, did you have anything else that you wanted to add under council comments?
I just wanted to thank you, Councilor Kilmer, for running an excellent meeting and conducting the interviews. And I hope to be back at the next regularly scheduled meeting, so thank you.
My pleasure. Let's see. Councilor Stevens?
Thank you, I echo all those comments from Councilor De novo, and was hoping that at a future meeting in the near future, we could talk about counselor committee assignments. I know I personally, for the last couple of years, have been a, the city council representative for the Community Coalition of Empire. I would like to resign from that committee and am hoping we can just revisit that list now that we have a new counselor and just see where we land with those things. That's all for me, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Matthews?
I just, I guess want to take a second to thank everybody who came out for public comment and for everyone who applied for the volunteer position at the library board. And everyone who's applied for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Fact Finding Committee. These volunteers are, you know, in, in, or this volunteerism, whether it's in the form of a comment or application for a position or actually filling a position, it's essential for, for us to be able to know what is happening out in the world, what people are thinking and feeling, but also in order to do the work of the city, and I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you to Chair Kilmer on running good meeting as well. I wanted to piggyback on Councilor De novo's comments there. Well done tonight, and thank you everyone for helping us out.
Right, Councilor Cribbins?
Yeah, nice job.
Thank you.
I wanted to say we participated this weekend, Saturday, in kind of a goal-setting strategic planning event. I found it very helpful. It was interesting, and I think it might have been you Stephanie that mentioned that we were separated in two separate groups and then kind of discussed the same things. But the synergy and similarities of where we were all kind of thinking that we were headed or what we needed or what were priorities were, you know, very similar. To me, that was, it was a good sign. We have lots of lofty goals, and it's a great idea to have a really well-thought-out, strong plan as we move through those. And I thought that was a good step to, to work in that way. So thank you to, to the, to the staff that set it up, that was very nice, thank you. And the staff that participated and the counselors, and the facilitator, facilitator did a nice job as well. Thank you.
Councilor Niebergel?
Yeah, I'll echo some of the comments others made, congratulations, and thanks to all those who threw their hat in the ring. I do want to add, being the resident educator, that we got school out on Friday for a big, huge basketball tournament here in town, so just be ready for, for that, folks.
Three A tournament?
Yes, yes, so three A tournament coming, coming our way. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of all I got, spring break's just around the corner.
All right, well, thank you so much. Appreciate all the thanks, it's just, it's what we do, right? I do want to say thank you for the presentation by the chief on the statistics. I know there's a lot of concern in our community, you know, safety is, is always a big issue, and I, I'm out there constantly trying to make sure that people know that we are not just sitting by letting things happen, and I think it's important that we have the community involved. And could you maybe talk about the ease that you have done by, by reporting? You've created an opportunity for the public if they need to report a crime? Real quick?
Yeah, so we implemented an online reporting program called PD Connect. We have some QR codes just even hung in our lobby, you can go and scan it. But it's a real easy process, you can do it on, you know, on your phone, and it'll walk you through the, the steps. You can report things like abandoned vehicles, all the way up to maybe, you know, we have people often that's, you know, calls and say they were a victim of theft. They don't want law enforcement to respond, they just want it documented. That's a great source to be able to just do it online. It is by no means a replacement of having an officer, if you want an officer to come out and investigate, we will absolutely do that, but it's just sometimes more convenient for people to online report. And we want to capture those stats, we want to know what's going on in our community. And so we encourage people to use that if that's an easier avenue.
Appreciate that.
I'm sorry, is this, is this something that can be found on the city's website, or is it an app? What, how can folks find this if they're looking for it?
Yeah, so the city website, we have put it in a couple of our Friday updates, we have it hung in our lobby, and we are, you know, looking for other ways to get it out as well. But yeah, it's, it's not an app, it's just something that you can scan the code and, and, or go online and do it, so, yeah.
So helping to share that information if you have avenues. I know Chris has some opportunities to maybe let the public know that that's available. If you have a social media account or a group that you belong to, make sure you share that. I, I just really appreciate, that's something that I had been asking for, for a long time, and, and I appreciate that we've done that. Also want to thank all of the folks who again, thank again all of the folks who applied for the library advisory board and came in and interviewed for that, stayed through the council meeting. We only are successful because we have people that get involved in those. And then also wanted to echo the comment from Councilor Cribbins on the work session that we did on Saturday. Different set of counselors that were there, but again, it was a great process. This wasn't just goal-setting as we've, we've done in the past. This was actually a strategic plan that will carry us even beyond what we normally do, which is a couple of years. So this is a plan for the future, and we'll be excited to be able to share that. I think we have one more, one more meeting.
So she left us with, gonna take what we worked on on Saturday, kind of refining that. Then her and I will work together to kind of establish maybe what we might find as far as the details to go within each focus area, and then present that to another kind of work session timeframe. Final refinement, and then it will come back to you as a full council for adoption. So we've got a little bit more work left to do.
And then that will be available for the public, once that goes before the council and is approved. We'll, we'll go up on our website so the public can see what, what that plan is and, and if there are things that can fit in with that. But basically, it's a guide for our staff to be able to implement and review and go through this process of making sure that we're hitting the, the mark on what the, the people that elect us want us, want to see in our community. So I appreciate that process and the work that our staff did to come in on the weekend to do that as well. And then finally, I just want to thank the folks online and the people in our audience that came out tonight to see the process that we do here every, every other week and at work sessions, so thank you for taking the time. And with that, I don't believe there's anything else to come before the council, so I will adjourn the meeting.